All right. Good evening, folks. Welcome to the City of Lowell's Onward Appeals Public Hearing for Monday, January 8th, 2024. The meeting will be held in the City Council Chambers. People can join the meeting via Zoom or by calling in as well. Just a few housekeeping reminders. If you have a cellphone or any electronic device, if you can turn it off or put on silent so it doesn't disrupt the meeting, it would be greatly appreciated. And if you're speaking on a petition tonight, please come to the lectern and state your name and address and speak there. Please do not yell and speak out of turn back and forth conversations. If you have any specific conversations, please take them outside. All right, moving into our agenda, we're going to go other business first. Seventeen Montreal Street, 264 to 266 Plain Street. The administrative review is to review compliance with special permit that was approved on September 27, 2022, and compliance with any outstanding conditions of approval. Good evening, Counselor.
Good evening. Attorney Catherine Flood, 549 Rogers Street, here on behalf of Pineapple Realty LLC. We're here for a review of my client's compliance with the special permit in variance issued on September 30, 2021. I appeared before the Board on August 17, 2023, and after a hearing here, I had a meeting with several of the departments within the city. My client needed to do a couple of things to be in compliance with his permits. One was to install a final top coat of asphalt, which was completed September 21, 2023. He had to remove the fencing that was encroaching on the city right-of-way. This was completed, as shown on the final as-built plan that was submitted to the Board. He had to comply with the wastewater utility department by installing a T-oil hood. They issued a stormwater permit for the property on September 25, 2023, and they confirmed with me via email that upon receipt of the signed copy, the project is in compliance with site stormwater conditions. As part of the stormwater, my client also had to install a stone interest pad on Plain Street, which was also completed, as shown on the attached plan. Another condition that they had asked that he do was install a gate to allow access into the property. That was also completed, and that is shown on the final as-built plan. So as of today, based on that plan and based on your review of that plan, I believe he should be in compliance with all the terms and conditions that forth in the original
All right. Thank you, Counselor, for that update on the administrative review. Do you have any questions or comments from the Board? All right, seen none. Can we have a motion to approve the administrative review, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the administrative review at Seventeen Montreal Street, 264 to 266 Plain Street.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Briere. Can we roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve administrative review.
Member Callahan.
Approval.
Member McCarthy.
Approve administrative review.
Member Briere.
Approval.
Member Procop.
Approve administrative review.
Member Havi.
Approve.
Member Nickerson.
Approve.
You've been approved.
Thank you for taking me.
Thank you, Attorney Flood. Have a good evening. All right, going back under continued business, we have ZBA-2023-13 variance. The applicant is Edson Dos Santos, property located at 330 Princeton Boulevard. The applicant has applied to the zoning board of appeals seeking a variance approval to subdivide the existing lot into two lots and construct a new two-family dwelling. The subject property is located in a traditional two-family. TTF zoning district, lot A requires variance approval per section 6.1 for relief from the minimum off-seat parking requirements and parking space dimensional requirements per section 5.1 for relief from the minimum frontage, minimum lottery per dwelling unit, minimum usable open space per dwelling unit requirements, and any other relief required in the Lowell's ordinance. Lobby requires variance approval for section 6.1 for relief from the minimum off-seat parking requirements and minimum parking space dimensional requirements per section 5.1 for relief from the minimum lottery per dwelling unit, minimum frontage, minimum usable open space, minimum side drive setback, and minimum garage, front yard setback requirements, and any other relief required in the Lowell's ordinance. Is the applicant here?
Been withdrawn.
Oh, yeah. We did get communication that they withdrew. They requested they withdrew without prejudice. Any comments from my colleagues before we move forward? All right, seeing none, can we have a motion to withdraw?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA-2023-13 for variances at 330 Princeton Boulevard to be withdrawn without prejudice.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Havi. Can we roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve withdrawal without prejudice.
Member Callahan.
Approve withdrawal without prejudice.
Member McCarthy.
Approve withdrawal without prejudice.
Member Briere.
Approval.
Member Procop.
Approve withdrawal without prejudice.
Member Havi.
Approve.
Member Nickerson.
Approve.
All right, going on to the next item on our agenda and the continued business, we have ZBA-2023-20 petition as a variance. The applicant is Mittesh Misri, 22 Carley Way. The applicant has applied to the Lowell's Onward Appeals for variance approval to construct a two-family addition at 22 Carley Way that would extend the maximum allowed floor area ratio, FAR. The property is located in a suburban single-family SSF zoning district and requires variance approval under section 5.1 and for any other which required in the Lowell's ordinance. Good evening, sir.
Thank you so much. My name is Mittesh Misri. I reside at 22 Carley Way, Lowell, Massachusetts. I presented to Board on September timeframe as well as in November timeframe. There was a feedback was given to me, and we review the plan. Revised plan is submitted to the Board here. So based on the feedback, actually, it is a sunroom addition in the back of the house. That's what we are trying to build. It has a high ceiling and high windows are there. Actually, based on the feedback, what we did here clearly shown that addition is in the back of the house. Existing deck is removed. Actually, total square feet reduced to 390 square feet, which is a half-down square feet from the originally suggested square feet here. The width of the addition is reduced by two feet, and actually, height of the addition is also reduced by one foot here. The length of addition is also reduced by two feet. We removed the stairs from the inside room. We removed the closet also from the inside room, and a new land survey plan is also submitted. Along with this, I have actually a signature from my neighborhood, around 24 people's signature from my neighborhood. They have no objection to build this addition. So I request to basically help me this sunroom addition.
Yeah, you bring it up, sir. That's fine. Anything else you want to share, sir, about your project?
All the signature is available from my neighborhood, my immediate neighbor, as well as all the houses in the neighborhood, you know? So around 24 people signed, saying that sunroom is a good thing to have, and it is going to be good for my family as well as my father also, you know? So he can enjoy this.
Okay, thank you, sir. We have no further comments. We'll open up the hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this petition? In opposition? In opposition? All right, seen none, that portion of the hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor? All right, the public hearing is closed. We're going to over-question the comments of the Board now. The Chair recognizes Mr. Prokop. Mr. Prokop, floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sir, I appreciate the work that you did to accommodate the neighbors. I think initially, it might have been a misconception of your intention, but in my opinion, just based on the adjustments, cutting down the size, it's more conducive with the Again, I'm just reviewing all the changes you made, and I'm sure your neighbors... I'm sure your neighbors appreciate the effort that it took. And I don't have any other questions at this time. Fortunately, I didn't get to drive by yesterday since it was snowing so bad, but I hope you had the sign up.
Sign is also there, a very big one, you know? With all the information there.
Perfect. I'll leave it to the rest of the Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prokop. The Chair recognizes Mr. Briere. Mr. Briere, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you. Thank you for the consideration that you've shown your neighbors. The spirit which you offered has resulted in a compromise. That's how this process should work. I commend you, and I vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Briere. The Chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with my fellow Board members. I think that the reductions that you made bring it more into a more acceptable size. I know that we still have a substantial amount of... I think it's 45% above the allowed FAR, but it's in the rear of the property, and you have made concessions on the square footage, and you have the support of the neighbors. So I think I can support this as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The Chair recognizes the Vice Chairman, Ms. Callahan. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. I share the same sentiments with my fellow Board members. I appreciate you going back to the drawing board, taking in the concerns of the neighbors. I believe there was some... A few times before this, there was some opposition to this previously. They brought forward comments. You've heard them, and adjusted appropriately. And I think that, based on that, I think that... And the fact that it looks like this is more... Going to be closer, more in compliance with zoning, I would approve the measure. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Callahan. The Chair recognizes Mr. Havi. Mr. Havi, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Quite frankly, I thought the last project was in line. I think you've gone above and beyond by scaling it down a little bit. Everything was really behind the house, and you have a good-sized lot there as it is. So I appreciate everything you've done to at least get neighborhood buy-in on this. So I have no problem supporting this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Havi. The Chair recognizes Mr. Nickerson. Mr. Nickerson, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I think you've done your due diligence, you know? Coming back here now, this is your second return. So I'm in support of this as well. I think it's in compliance to everything that we've asked, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nickerson. Sir, thank you for the information, and we're going to keep this... The signatures from the neighbors that you have, just for the record. So thank you for your project, and again, like my colleague said, thank you for your willingness to work with the neighbors and the city and really scale down your project to make it really more appealing to all the neighbors and everyone involved. You know, I can support this as well. I think you had no opposition today, so I think that's a good thing. It's always sometimes very difficult. So, yeah, I can support it as well, sir. If there's no further comments, if you have a motion?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA-2023-20 for variance at 22 Carley Way, variance approval to construct a two-story addition that would exceed the maximum floor-to-area ratio.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Havi. Can we roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve.
Chairman... Member Callahan.
Approve.
Member McCarthy.
Approve.
Member Briere.
Approval.
Member Procop.
Approve.
Member Havi.
Approve.
Member Nickerson.
Approved.
So you've been approved. Wish you best of luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good night. All right, moving on. On our next item on the agenda and the continued business, we have David and Tamara Oliveria. The applicant have applied to the zoning board of appeals seeking a variance approval to utilize the upper floor of the existing commercial building for an office or business use. The subject property is located in a traditional mixed-use TMU zoning district. The project requires variance approval per section 6.1 for relief from the minimum off-seat parking requirements and any other relief required in the Lowell's ordinance. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is John Bavuso. I'm a friend of David and Tamara who are here. They've asked me to speak for them. The property at 604 Central Ave is a 1901 property that has been in use as a commercial building for as long as we can tell. The previous three owners over the last five years had applied for permits to convert part of the property to residential. None of those permits were ever completed or inspected. David and Tamara bought the property in 2022. There were four existing business licenses issued to that property since 2016, but the property has been used as commercial to other's time. We did supply a copy of a parking plan that the church did have. Luckily, we did not have to have a survey to do it. We also rewrote the letter of the lease agreement by the pastor and had that notarized. So I mean, David and Tamara are trying to make a market improvement onto this property. They have four employees at work there, one who walks to work because she's local, two of them carpool together. So I believe that we've met almost all of the requirements. And again, I would like to point out that it's a 1901 building. It should be exempt from the parking regulations because of the continued use. There are 14 public parking spaces within two blocks, seven directly in front, seven on the next block at the corner of Richmond and Central. Some of these spaces are two-hour limits. I don't know how many there are because a couple of the signs are missing. It says two-hour parking between the signs. I think that there is adequate parking. Well, we know there's a tight parking here, but I think for their needs, there's adequate parking. They do rent a commercial warehouse on Stedman Street for their commercial vehicles. Occasionally, they'll bring the van to work, but it does not stay there for long periods of time. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that summary and update on the project, sir. If you have no further comments, we'll open up the hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition of this petition? In opposition? In opposition? All right, seen none, that portion of the hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Chairman Peck and members of the Board. My name is Jason Mello. I'm here representing my company, Citywide Properties. Our building... We have a building, 614 Central Street. We're located... We're on the opposite corner of Central and Crosby from the applicant. Our business office is located at that property. It's a four-unit property. We have two offices on the ground level and two residential apartments on the upper levels. I'm here today to speak in favor of the project. As an investor and a landlord in the city of Lowell, I understand both sides of the argument. I know there's been opposition to this because of parking, and I understand both needs. Residents are concerned about parking, noise, additional traffic, and business owners and investors, they're concerned about the ability to maximize their property to make it economically feasible. I want to be clear, I'm not advocating against the needs of the residents. Some of the people that reside in that neighborhood are tenants of mine. I just want to shed some light on this situation because I want to focus on some positives because it's easy to be focused on the negative aspects of a project like this. I grew up in Back Central in the 80s and 90s. I've seen Back Central when it's been great. I've seen Back Central in times like today when it's not so great. You know, as a kid, I remember riding my bike down a Santoro's, getting a sub, then walking over to Jerry's Food Store, which is now Jay's Food Store, and getting soda and candy. Today, I wouldn't allow my 10-year-old son to ride his bike down a Santoro's and to walk over to Jay's Food Store, and I think it's obvious why. So I think Back Central needs help, and, you know, I'd like to focus on the investment that these folks have put into the Old Mario's Furniture Store. Investments that benefit the whole community. So they've upgraded the building with fire safety systems, alarm systems, fire suppression sprinklers, stuff like that. It benefits my building. It benefits their next-door neighbor on the other side. It benefits the residential, single-family home behind their property. Investments like that benefit the whole community. My understanding is they've also upgraded the building insulation-wise, electrical-wise, HVAC, high-efficiency units. That's all environmental stuff that also benefits the community. So those are the main reasons why I'm speaking in favor of this is because I think that any investment in Back Central right now is a good one. I don't know these folks personally. I met David and Tamara maybe three weeks ago. They walked into my office to introduce themselves and ask if I had any parking available for lease. I told them I didn't. I have two spots available at our Richmond Street lot that I had reserved for my own business use. Later that evening, I was stopped at the intersection of Elm Street and Central Street right in front of their building, and it was three floors of huge glass windows, beautifully illuminated, Christmas decorations on the first floor, and I thought to myself, this is what Back Central needs right now. So I called them the next day, and I offered them my... I offered them the two parking spots that I was holding for my own use if it would help their cause. The neighbor to them on the other side of their property, since David and Tamara started renovating their building, that neighbor started some exterior renovations of their property. In the springtime, I'm planning some major exterior renovations of my property. So I think we're in a situation where a rising tide raises all ships, and I think Back Central needs a rising tide right now. So thank you. Thank you for the time at the podium, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mello, for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor? Seen none, the public hearing is closed. We're going to over-question the comments to the Board now. The Chair recognizes Mr. Briere. Mr. Briere, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll begin by thanking Mr. Mello. Thank you for your investment and your advocacy of the Back Central neighborhood. You, your dad, your entire family have shown the commitment to that neighborhood. Thank you for the words that you just offered. To the petitioner, the parking plan satisfies my concerns, and I can only hope that your business benefits from the very generous offer from Pastor Silver in his church. I'll vote in favor, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Briere. The Chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to think back on the initial hearing that we had and the continuance to today's, and what a difference. I'm so happy to see the parking plan, which shows a very generous amount of space for handling more than you need for parking, and to hear Mr. Mello's glowing comments. In addition, I've gone by the property a number of times since the last hearing and today and noticed no vans parked on sidewalks, and I noticed no... None of the red flags that we heard at the last hearing. And so I want to believe that this makes total sense here and that you satisfied all the parking, and we don't have any opposition tonight, and I don't see any reason why we can't support this. And I agree that a prosperous business in that location is a tremendous benefit to the community as well as the city of Lowell. Fran, we do have comments about signage, and I was just wondering if any efforts been made to bring the signage into compliance with zoning? Okay. Okay.
There was an issue a year ago with the primary sign. It had been permitted. The sign that was put up was too big. The city had notified. Maire and Dave have received the [inaudible]. The banners and the windows are permitted. I did forward a copy of that to Dylan Sicker today to bond with the free certificates of completion. Maire and Dave have received the [inaudible].
So if I... So there's no reason to believe that there's any issues with signage at the moment because you're meeting the requirements of zoning as we speak today?
Absolutely.
Okay. Very good.
The primary sign has not been put up. Once we get through the hearing now to allow the businesses...
Yep.
We will then reapply for another primary.
Terrific. Okay. Wonderful. Okay. I just want to thank you for all the efforts you've made since the last hearing, and I can support this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The Chair recognizes the Vice Chairman, Ms. Callahan. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, when this was last before me, I had no issues with regards to it, obviously, I think considering the area, the Back Central neighborhood. I understand there was some opposition with regards to parking, and parking's always been congested back there for years and years and years. It's all public parking. It's all owned by the city. So it's... There's clearly a hardship area there. My approval... My prior approval has now been even emphasized more with the statements that Mr. Mello made in support of this. This Back Central neighborhood, all the businesses, sounds like everybody, you know, like you said, it raises all tides, and it looks like all the businesses in all the other areas is... And it looks like all the businesses in all the other areas are supporting it, too. Case in point here with regards to Mr. and Mrs. Olivera getting support from the church with regards to their parking. So it's great to see that the neighborhood is all trying to support each other. I had approved, I was in approval at this the last time, and I'm certainly more in approval now, and I wish you the best of luck, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Callahan. The chair recognizes Mr. Havi.
Thank you. The last meeting was a little more contentious. There were some issues that were brought up. I appreciate the documentation for the parking. I know that was one issue because we really didn't know how much church parking we were going to be able to use. And you, you rectified that, that's great. I do agree with Mr. Mello. Back Central, it's really condensed neighborhood, and we really need to uplift the neighborhood. I think the ball's been started with the project down the end of the street at the old Whipple. I think this will only add to that, and I can appreciate you doing the right thing where you had illegal building on, on the, the second floor there. But with the condensed nature of the neighborhood, we also have to be aware of our neighbors. It's important. And the last meeting, one of the concerns that was brought up was double parking and parking on sidewalks, which, you know, remember McCarthy said he hadn't seen anybody driving by, and I, I take him for his word, and that's, that's wonderful. But the response was, well, just call the cops if that happens. And that's really not the response we want. As a city of Lowell, we don't, we don't want, you know, just call the cops. We, we want good neighbors, right? That makes a good neighborhood. So I would just hope, if there is an issue, that the owners, especially if it's your employees, would be aware of that and educate your employees not to do that. I'm not saying they're doing it. I'm not accusing anybody. Just be aware with the tight density of that neighborhood, everybody has to get along in order for things to work out there. So I'll approve this. I would have approved it last time. But I do appreciate everything you guys have done to, to document everything you have, and I'll give approval. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Havi. The chair recognizes Mr. Nixon.
Hi, thank you, Chair. I don't have any questions. I just, I drive through this area twice a day, back and forth. And I think what Mr. Mello had was pretty powerful for, in favor for another business and some of that. So I'm in favor of this as well.
All right, thank you, Mr. Nixon. The chair recognizes Mr. Proko.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with, with the fellow board members. It shows that some care was taken, and, and Mr. Mello's eloquent response in favor of this project, you know, shows that the neighbor, the businesses came together. The fact that there is no opposition, you know, based on how it was the last time. And, and I, I think working to make, to make it more conducive so that the business can flourish and the Back Central can flourish. It's, it's a testament of what the businesses can do when they, when they come together. So I appreciate all the effort that the Oliveras took in, in appeasing their neighbors, and I'll be voting in favor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Proko. You know, I, I also agree with my colleagues. I think the, the updated parking plan, it satisfied my concerns in terms of parking. And again, I know some of my colleagues and other people said this, that Back Central is a tight area. But, you know, I think this will help alleviate some of those concerns. And, you know, like, like my colleague said and Mr. Mello said, this is quite an investment to the city, so, so thank you, folks, for your investment to the city. I'll be supporting it so well. If there's no further comments, can we motion, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2023-38 at 604 Central Street for variance approval per section 6.1 for relief from minimum off-street parking requirement.
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Proko. Can we roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve.
Member Callahan.
Approved.
Member McCarthy.
Approve.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Proko.
Approve.
Member Havi.
Approve.
Member Nickerson.
Approve.
All right, folks, you've been approved. Wish you the best of luck, okay? Thank you for coming out this evening. Have a good night. All right, moving on. On the agenda, we're going into new business. We have ZBA-2023-48. Petition is a variance. The applicant is Matthew Parker. The applicant has applied to the Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals seeking a variance approval to extend the current porch across the front of the home at 37 Laurel Street. The subject property is in the suburban, single-family SSF zoning district. The proposal requires variance approval from the Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals under section 5.1 for the maximum floor area ratio FAR requirements and front yard porch setback and any other relief needed under the Lowell zoning ordinance. Is there anyone from Laurel Street here?
I'm actually on the Zoom meeting.
Okay, good evening.
Hi, I'll turn on my camera, too, just so you guys can talk to me. How's everybody doing?
Good evening, sir.
Yeah, so it's, it's not a really intense product, project, excuse me. What we're looking to do is take our current porch, which is about, I believe about eight feet long and extended across the front of our house, to a total length of about 22 feet. The current issue right now is we have a setback rule that is 17 feet. And currently, depending on which side of the intended porch you'll be measuring, it's 16 feet on one side and 16 three feet, 16 feet, three inches on the other side. So what we're looking for is the, the ability to grant permission to build that front porch for leisure use, to give us additional seating on the front of the porch so we're not pinned in our backyard on nice days. And we can sit out front, have, you know, drinks, dinner, whatever it may be that, that uses a porch for, and just add to the, the experience of living in our house and living in the, the velvety section of the wall. Like I said, not really too intense compared to the, the last two. I don't know if you guys have any other questions on top of what I had already said, but that's, that's kind of it at the moment.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Parker. We're just going to open the hearing to the public now. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this applicant? In opposition, in opposition? Seeing none, that portion of the proceedings closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor, in favor? All right, seeing none, we're going to open up questions to the board. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And looking at the comments that we have, which are wonderful from the city, the FAR is substantially different than the, what's allowed. Maximum FAR in this suburban, single-family is .35. Current FAR is .89. But with the addition of the porch, it only rises to .91, which is hardly a change. Still, you, you'll still have to come before the board to be granted the variance. And I understand that you did match the existing smaller porch dimension, and you're just extending it across the front of the house to provide more space to use the porch, which makes a lot of sense. And I think that, based on the comments also from the city, that it wouldn't derogate from the intent of zoning, which I agree with. The property is extremely well-maintained, and I can only imagine that this addition of the porch will only enhance the use of the home that much better, that much more. So I really don't have any questions. I think this makes a lot of sense, and it's surprising the FAR number that we're at here that we're approving at .91, but it makes a lot of sense when you look at the structure and the size of the lot, so I'm in favor of this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair recognizes the vice chairman, Ms. Callahan. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, this makes complete sense on this, I understand. The FAR is a bit of a pickle because it's a lot, going up to 9.91. But again, you've got a smaller lot of 5,000 square feet. You're only extending the porch and extending it to the side, which has been, looks like you've been pretty gracious about. So it's only going, it's, it's going to be the same feet out, only going towards the side to the end of the house. And looking at the area, you know, some of your neighbors, too, I see that they've got porches that extend the length of the, the length of their buildings as well. So I, I feel that this would certainly meet the criteria. I don't, I think, as staff has pointed out, they don't believe that this granting of variance would derogate from the intent of zoning on this. So I would take that, I'll take their word for it, and I would be in approval of this. So I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, Ms. Callahan. The floor, the chair recognizes Mr. Havi. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. I have no issues, and I'll vote to approve this.
Thank you, Ms. Havi. The chair recognizes Mr. Nixon. Mr. Nixon, the floor is yours, sir.
Yeah, I have no problem with this either. I don't see the, I have no questions for it, but I just, I think this is actually pretty well-constructed, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. The chair recognizes Mr. Proko. Mr. Proko, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I don't have any issues as well. I, I think it's, the fact that he, the fact that the applicant has made my other members happy, without question, I, I think I'd be voting in favor of this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Proko. The chair recognizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Brier. Mr. Parker, I, I think this is pretty straightforward. Again, the requests that you're asking, the relief, it's very minimal to me. And it adds to your home, but adds to the value of the neighborhood and the character, and it aligns with everything with zoning. To me, this is something that, that's completely appropriate for, for variance. So kudos to you, sir. I think you could have asked for a lot more, so I'd be voting in favor as well. All right, if there's no further comments, if you could have a motion, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2023-48 for variance at 37 Laurel Street to exceed the maximum floor area ratio requirement.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Havi. Can we roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve.
Member Callahan.
Approved.
Member McCarthy.
Approve.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Proko.
Approve.
Member Havi.
Approve.
Member Nickerson.
Approve.
All right, you've been approved. Wish you the best of luck on your project. Thank you for coming out this evening. Have a good night, sir.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Have a good evening.
Moving on to our next item on the agenda, under new business, we have Petition is a variance. The applicant is Wedman Jonas. The applicant has applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals seeking a variance approval to construct a two-floor addition at 39 Corbett Street. The subject property is in the traditional, single-family TSF zoning district. The project requires variance approval from the Zoning Board of Appeals under section 5.1 for the maximum floor area ratio FAR and for any other relief required in the Lowell zoning ordinance. Anyone from 39 Corbett Street here? Yeah, do you want to come up to the lectern, sir? You just say your name and address and just tell us about your project, sir?
Yep, thank you, Chair. My name is Evan Simea. The construction representative for the, for the client, they're right here. So just to speak on the, on behalf of the project. So we're pretty much asking for the variance because we need, we need to add, extend the back for like a family room area. Thank you. So we need to extend the back for a family room area. And while we're doing that, we wanted to fit upstairs the second floor and make everything match, and then so that it could be one even more aesthetic-looking property. So I know the area ratio, it surpasses the requirement for the area ratio, so that's why we are, we are here to, to ask for the variance. So it's a young family. They, they, they moved into Lowell in 2021, and the family is actually growing, increasing. So they have two boys and also their parents live with them. So they definitely need the space. They need a little bit more room to accommodate the size of the family. And I'm sure that there's alternative, I mean, for them to either sell or move, stuff like that. But I don't think that's what's in the agenda. So they like the neighborhood, especially for their kids, and then they want to stay. And then would like to, I mean, make an investment into their house and into the neighborhood by increasing, upgrading the, the house, adding that family room area and upstairs, adding their bedroom, a master bedroom upstairs in that, in that property. I kind of take a look around the area, so it seems like the, everything was built that way. I don't know, I don't know who was the builder there, but everything seems to be building almost the same way. But there's some variance in, like, if you go on Saratoga Street, the other street around, so there's, there's areas where the whole second floor is, is complete. But that area is usually that, they, they complete the front, and then the back is, is left empty. But we're trying to increase that so that they can accommodate the family to stay and live in the area. If they have other comments, they can add their own comments. But I'm here as the representative, I'm going to be handling the construction, so I might as well survive it and then speak on their behalf. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you for the summary of your project. There's no further comments from you. We're opening up the hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this petition? In opposition? Yeah, you want to come to the lectern?
Hi.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'm the owner of 43 Corbett Street, and I am his direct neighbor. And I feel that I've been living there all my life, my mom, eighty, you know, sixty-something years. And I feel that my neighbors never really talked my mother about what was going on. We weren't really brought into the loop as to how we would feel about being crowded even further than what we already feel. Our neighborhood's very small. It's historic. We have one-family homes on the whole street. And if you look at my driveway, all I'm going to be doing is looking at a pitched roof that goes all the way, almost to the, blocks out the sun, the sky, everything I've been used to looking at since I was little. And it already feels compacted. It feels small. Our driveway's tiny. It's a small area, a small backyard, you know? And the feelings that we have about it were never really addressed with my neighbor. And it's affecting us directly because we're directly next to him, where the sun comes up from behind the house and gets blocked by his high-pitched roof, as he already has from all our other neighbors. But then he's extending the high-pitched roof to block out even more sunlight and the sky, you know? And it's going to affect the way I feel about living there. It's going to make me feel claustrophobic. And it's just, my passion is growing plants. My passion is taking care of my home. My passion is looking at my other neighbors' homes, seeing that they all have the same particularly-built pitches as we do, and the room to see the sun come up. And I feel that that is going to be an extension to make me feel crowded in, when we already feel crowded in it as it is. So I object to the whole thing, and I apologize for objecting. I love my neighbor, but I don't love the fact that he's not taken to us into consideration.
Okay, thank, thank you, sir, for your comments. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Simone Rivera, and I live at 43 Corbett Street. And that was my son. We owned that house since 1967. And they're all the same, the houses on that street are pretty much all made the same. The extension that he wants to put on, I'm not convinced of what it is. If it goes from the second floor out, we won't get any kind of light whatsoever, because that's where we get the light. So it is a concern to us, and it's not because of who they are, but it's because it'd be an inconvenience for us that we wouldn't be able to do, see anything during the day. Okay?
Thank, thank you for your comments, Ms. Rivera. Anyone else? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to this project? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Maria Farrier. I'm from 60 Cosgrove Street, which is the opposite street over. I've lived there for over 30 years and I oppose because those streets have become so congested with cars and that it's just, you add more people, you add more rooms, you're just going to add more. And noise over there from that street has become like unbearable in the summertime especially. So the reason why I oppose is because of what I just said and because of the, all those houses have, were built back in the late 18 to early 1900s. That is the style of those homes. And if that were I and I was looking to buy a house, then when you go inside and you look at it, if you feel that it doesn't fit your family, then you should just move on and look somewhere else to find the proper home for yourself. But, you know, going and, and buying a house, but then a year or two down the line, oh, this house is too small or whatever, like that's just not how it's done. The majority of those houses on those streets are all the same style. So for that reason, noise, parking being so tight, I drive up and down that street every day. It's like you have to find somewhere to pull over so the car coming from the opposite side can get by you. Like there's no room there for like two cars to go by if there's parking on both sides. So that is my reason. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, ma'am, for your comments. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition of this petition? In opposition, in opposition. All right, seeing none, portion of public hearings closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor, in favor, in favor. Seeing none, all right, the question, the public hearings closed. We're going to open up questions, comments to the board. But, but sir, mister, do you want to come back to the lectern? Before I open it back to the board, do you want to just comment on any of the butters and neighbors, sir? I'll give you an opportunity to comment if you like.
Thank you, Chair. So I'm not aware of the relationship between the neighbor and the neighbor next door. But I think we, my client, we went through the process that the city is asking us to do by posting and by publishing and by doing all of these requirement. So I think we, we did the requirement that the cities ask on us for, to ask for the variance. And we got to parking, the, the house itself is on parking. So we're not adding congestion into parking in the area. So I'm, I'm not sure how by, by putting the addition for, 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 for the single, for the single family, we're not, we're not making it into a two-family house. And the fact that, I mean, you have a family, your family is growing, you can't, I mean, you can't plan on, you don't know what size your family is going to be two, two, three years down the line. It's a, it's a young, it's a young couple. So, I mean, I don't know if they, if they expected that they're going to have two sons down the line or what, or whatnot. If, if their parents were about to come and live with them, though. I'm not, I mean, we, we can try to, to, I mean, I'm not sure how we're going to alleviate the neighbors' concern that we're going to congest the street by, by raising kids in the area. So I, I don't, I don't, I don't get that. Second thing, I mean, there's nothing we can do with the sun. The sun is up there in the sky. So I'm sure that it comes from the south, I mean, comes, comes from the south. There might be some blockage during the day, but it's not going to block the person's view of the sun the whole entire day. So I, I understand the concern, but at the same time, I think it, I think some of it is, is, is kind of, kind of over. Because by extending the back of the, of the, of the roof or of the house is, I don't see how that's going to completely block the sun from somebody's view. Yeah, so I, I mean, but anyway.
Thank, thank you, sir. All right, my colleagues might have some more questions or comments, so you want to just hang by the podium, sir? All right, so open questions, comments to the board now. The chair recognizes the vice chairman, Mr. Callahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. So I'm very familiar with the area, growing up, I grew up in the neighborhood, I grew up on Bowden Street. So I'm very familiar with that whole area, Corbett Street, Cosgrove. And, I mean, the neighbors have a point that all of those lots that you, that, that neighbor you are all the same. They're all the same lot size, they're very small, very tight and all the same. One single families that are kind of split level, front is two, two store, two floors, second and the back is one floor. And I'm really kind of struggling with whether or not, how the hard, where the hardship lies in this because you're in the same situation that all the other surrounding lots are. So can you, give me an idea what the hardship is that, that meets the criteria for the application of the variance on this?
Yep, so I mean, the hardship is with, with a growing family. So it's, it's not, I mean, I don't, I don't know exactly how to put it. So it's a, it's a growing family, it's a young couple. I mean, they want to stay in the area. I mean, the, I mean, the only alternative is, okay, this area is not big enough for us. We can sell or rent and then move to another area. But I mean, the neighborhood is, is what, is where they, where they choose to live and then they like, and they want to stay there. So I think an investment into the property to make, to, to accommodate their growing family is, 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 is a hardship, is what I wanted.
Okay, it's just because there's a lot of relief that's being sought here and again, considering the situation, the, the sizes of the lots in that area. And it would mean, I think the intention when those were broken out was small little single-family houses of moderate size, very, very moderate size. And I'm, I listen to my other fellow board members. I mean, I, I may be willing to consider, I don't know about the back extension, the actual back extension at all, but to level off the top floor, maybe? I might consider that? I don't know, I'm just, I'm, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to figure, struggle, I'm struggling to try to figure out how this, if this meets the hardship, meets the criteria, even meets the intent of zoning with regards to that. So, but I'll listen to my other fellow board members and consider what they have to say and figure it out. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Mr. Callahan. The chair recognizes Mr. Hovey, Mr. Hovey, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. To, I guess piggyback off member Callahan, I don't see a hardship. Small lot unfortunately is not a hardship. And I get the family hardship, but we're talking about zoning hardship, two different things.
Okay.
We have a 3,000 square foot lot. We're not adding just one story, we're adding one story, so second floor on the existing one story and then two more stories behind that. There is nine other lots in the area of similar size, all with a floor area ratio that averages around point six two, which is roughly where this is now. And we're asking for a large increase to point nine two, I believe. So when we go to intent of zoning, I think this flies in the face of it. I think the intent of zoning, especially in these dense neighborhoods like that part of South Lowell, is not to encroach on your neighbors. I think maybe the one story, but even, even that, it's because of the lot size, your floor area ratio is going to go up no matter what. And, and I think this size of a project, according even to the people here, is really going to be encroaching on, on them. So is it, does it do public harm? I, I think, you know, as a zoning board, if we start getting into these dense neighborhoods and really allowing these big projects, there's going to be an issue. I will agree to your point of parking is not one of the variances that you're looking for. So parking is really not a concern in front of us. So that has nothing to play with this. I just think the size of this project in that neighborhood on that lot size is, at, at this point, is something that I can't get on board with.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hovey. The chair recognizes Mr. Nickerson, Mr. Nickerson, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Chair. So I'm, I'm looking at the floor plans and the way it's laid out. I mean, I know families grow and, you know, things need to change at times. So I am like a little bit like 50/50 as far as understanding it as well. I'm not completely against it, you know? But I'll let the rest of the board have their discussion and make my decision after. But thank you though, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Nickerson. The chair recognizes Mr. Prokop, Mr. Prokop, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I, I would have to agree with the, with the hardship issue. I, I don't see the hardship from a zoning perspective simply because this lot is, is extremely small. It's under 3,100 square feet lot. Looking at, at the, the neighborhood itself, I mean, everything is in, is in line. And I'm not sure how, you know, making this bigger, it being the, I just think it will fall out of line, you know, based on this expansion is because the lots are so small. Yeah, it's, it's, it's a struggle. I mean, I understand, you know, that, you know, from, you know, the family, they, they have their parents and you want to accommodate, you know, based on, on, you know, being able to support, you know, the family. But it's, it's, it's difficult. I, I'm not, I don't see, you know, where the, the issue with traffic and so forth. If you expanding this, but it's just the lot size is, it's extremely small. And I just don't know if, if this would, would fit in the neighborhood going to such a large expansion. I'm looking at the plans, I mean, it looks nice, but, I'm sorry?
Look, if, if I may say something.
Yeah, please speak into the mic.
If I may say something quickly. So, I mean, with the, I mean, we don't have, you know, the plane in front of us. We could, if we extend the back to accommodate a family room and a bedroom, there's no, there's no yards left. There's nothing left in the back for yards. I mean, we'll have like, maybe like a 20 foot from the back of the house to the yard. I mean, we could, could like get an expansion that way that doesn't go up. But that's going, that's just not, I don't, I don't see how that's going to be aesthetic to, to the area. But anyways, that's, that's just what, yeah, thank you.
I don't know if it's, it's, again, just if the reconsidering the amount of development that needs to be done. Yeah, it's, it, this is a tough call. I think I'd have to listen to the rest of my board members here because just based on what I see, I'm not sure. It's, it's a tough call. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank, thank you, Mr. Prokop. The chair recognizes Mr. Brier, Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your family's growing, that's wonderful. That's wonderful. Everyone has that right. And as a result, you need to grow your home as, as well to provide for them. And I'd like to be able to see you do it. But there are some concerns with the size of the project. I have to say without, I don't mean any disrespect, but I'm not going to deny this because of sunlight. And there are no parking issues here. Now, there's a certain character to this neighborhood. The homes are small. But doesn't it, to the neighbors who have some concerns, and they have every right, and I address them respectfully, doesn't it say something about one of your newest neighbors that they want to continue to stay there? Make further investment in that home? Those are all positives to the neighborhood itself and the director butters. Now with respect to zoning regulation, I'm not so sure there's a hardship here. I don't. But I would, I would hope there could be some modification. There could be more acceptable, that there could be further communication with the abutters. The, I thought the abutters who did rise in opposition were most respectful. In fact, the gentleman that rose said, I love my neighbors, I just don't love this project. And that's the right way to approach it, approach it with courtesy and try to come to some compromise. I don't know what that compromise would be. But I'm, I'm really hanging my head, I, I don't want to deny this petition. But by the same token, the way it's presently presented, don't know if I can vote in favor of it. Got to, got to abide by zoning. So maybe you just can put your heads together, take another shot at something that's mutually acceptable to all. And we can come out with an addition to a home and, you know, a neighborhood that, that maybe changes over time. Won't be the only individual that maybe, that may consider such an addition. I'm from a very dense neighborhood in Lower Senaval, that's where I'm from. The Acre prior to that, so two dense neighborhoods. I currently live over in South Lowell. So and I, and I, directly behind me, three-story townhouses were built. And that affects the sunlight, I get it. But those townhouses are progress for the city. They add to the tax base. And I have to, I have to sacrifice a bit of that sunlight. I'm willing to do it because the, the new homes have invited new investment, new neighbors and, and a new spirit in the neighborhood that, that benefits us all. So that's my appeal. We'll see what happens. Next up is Dennis McCarthy. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Brier. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy, Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I agree that this seems like it's a, a big ask. But I also see some issues with the presentation tonight that I think need to be cleaned up. I'd like to see this continued myself. And I'd like to see a couple of things addressed in the next time we hear this. First of all, the site plan doesn't match the floor plans. The site plan illustrates or denotes an addition that's 15 by 21.8 feet. The floor plans show an addition in the back that is 16 by 17 foot four.
If I may?
So the site plan, I think, is wrong, but I don't know for sure. But the site plan should match the floor plan and have the same dimensions on it. And then the second thing that I see that's different is the FAR. So I'm expecting the addition to have a full basement that would contribute to the FAR. So the way the floor area ratio is defined in the city, if, if this home has a basement, a foundation that goes down, you know, seven, eight feet. a foundation that goes down, you know, seven or eight feet, that that contributes, that area contributes. And so, my calculation is that you're asking with this application an even higher FAR ratio than the .92, because you're not factoring in the basement size that would come with that. So, I think we need something more streamlined. But, look, I don't wanna pick apart your plans, but you're asking for three living spaces and four bedrooms. I think maybe you could think about this a different way and make it a smaller addition, is what I'm saying. And I think we're hearing that tonight, that you're asking for too much. If the FAR is even higher than what you're reporting on the site plan, I mean, it's probably over one, if you factor in the basement of this addition. I think you really have to think about what's critical for this addition and come up with something that is, you know, the minimum that you can have, because you're asking for an awful lot here. I will say, you must have at least two off-street parking spaces. The site plan doesn't illustrate the number of off-street parking spaces. I think it'd be nice if we could have a number of spaces there that you're providing. It might even be three off-street parking spaces that you're providing.
Yeah, there's at least three.
You know, that's a wonderful thing, because if you've got four bedrooms, having three off-street parking spaces helps with dense, with parking in the neighborhood. And then, I had one more, but now I'm losing it. Oh, the property is a north-south orientation. So, what that means, in these miserable months in the winter, when we lose 40% of the daylight that we have in June, right? I understand daylight, and I suffer as well as everybody else in the winter with lack of daylight. But in the morning hours, you might have a little bit of shading, but in the, or in the afternoon, but because it's a north-south orientation, you have the best, or the least impact on the neighborhood, because, in addition, you're even lower than what's allowed by zoning. You're only 25 feet to the ridge. I'm guessing the current house is probably 22 or 23 feet to the ridge. So, it's not that much difference in height that the new structure is providing. So, I understand daylight, and I understand that it's precious. And I hate these months when my neighbor's house blocks the daylight into my house and, you know, noon, but it's just something that we have to accept. There is going to be these struggles, in the winter especially. But there isn't a big change in height here. The height from the original house to the new addition might be three feet of ridge height. So, I think you've done well with not asking for a lot of additional height. It could certainly be higher per zoning. But I think the density, we need a site plan that matches the floor plan, and we need, I think, a smaller footprint. I think, you know, the density is just too big. And you should look at the floor plan again. We've got four bedrooms and three different living spaces, as well as a dining room and a kitchen. Maybe something can be pared out of that, and maybe you don't need quite as much space as that.
If I, if I may?
You go ahead.
So, definitely, the original site plan has an issue, I think, that should have been corrected to match the architectural plan.
Yes.
Yeah, 'cause there's a four-foot setback from the architectural plan that's not in the site plan.
Well, there's two dimensions that are in, that don't match the floor plan. You've got a 15-foot dimension away from the existing structure. The floor plan shows a 16-foot dimension.
So, yeah, so the floor, so architect, and there's a miscommunication between, because we gave the architect the site plan, and then he was matching to, to make sure that we are within code, so that's why he moved it back the four feet. So, I think we have, we have to go back with this, with the surveyor and then try to, I mean, kinda make those two set. But I think we need to go back with the site surveyor to sync those two things. But the site plan was done first, before the architectural plan was done. That's where the difference comes in. But second thing is, we're not adding a basement in that new addition. It's just gonna be foundation and slab.
Okay.
Yeah.
Terrific.
It's not gonna be.
So, there isn't. So, it probably is much closer to the number you're showing there?
Yeah, it's probably less than what the site plan is asking by that reduction of four feet from that site plan. So, it's probably less than what we're asking. There's a discrepancy in those two plans.
Okay. Thank you. I still think that we need the math to make sense, because your site plan that records the FAR has a larger footprint than your floor plans. So, I don't know what the real FAR is here, if your site plan is the document that shows the FAR on it, and it shows a larger footprint than your floor plans.
Okay. So, I think that's something we have to revisit and see.
Maybe it's even less.
It's even less than what?
Yeah. But still.
Yep. Well, that's the one that's gonna get approved, so we'll need something else.
Huge FAR ask here. And we've got four bedrooms and three living spaces in the house, in the floor plan. Maybe you could lose one of the living spaces as a thought.
It's only two living spaces. I'm not sure where the third living space is.
I'm not getting into how you wanna live.
No, no, no. Since you mentioned.
But you've got, you've got spaces defined as family room, living room, and loft. You've got a loft with, it looks like it's a flat-screen TV, and maybe it's a game room. I don't know what it is, but it's a loft space that's a living space. Then you've got a family room, and then you've got a living room. So, you've got three different living spaces. Is it possible to think about the design differently, to minimize the footprint, and maybe eliminate one of those spaces as a thought?
No, no, no. I take your comment into consideration. Thank you.
Okay. But I would suggest that we continue this, and you come back with corrected site plan and a reduction in size, as a thought. And also, show your parking spaces on the site plan, please. No further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Sir, you know, I would agree with you that, you know, I think it's great that the young couple, they wanna stay in the city, that they're growing, they wanna, they wanna continue to live in the city and live in the neighborhood. I think, I think that's a good thing. You know, I think to some of the comments of my colleagues and to the Butters here and the neighbors, you know, I think for me personally, I think the relief you're seeking, it's a bit much. And to me, how the project is at the moment, I wouldn't be able to approve it. I really think, I really like the suggestion of Mr. McCarthy and Mr. Briere, you know, scale down, reduce the footprint, kinda go back and work out the layout and just make sure your documents and the numbers add up. Because like my colleague said, you know, it could be small, the belief you're asking, 'cause that doesn't match or run out of the site plan and the floor plan and all that. So, we'll continue the matter, and I also, so the comments by Mr. Briere, I think it would be a good thing for you, sir, and the applicant, if you guys talk to the neighbors, you know, just to see what, you know, what people think, how we can work together. Again, you know, you did all your part, your due diligence, like you said, you put it, you put the posting and, you know, for the letters and the mailers and, you know, the due process with the notification part, which is correct. I think for me, I do wanna see kind of work with just your neighborhood to see what they think, and if we can kind of come to some kind of middle ground. I think it'll only help your project, but help the city and the neighbors as well. So, just, Mr. Callahan, when's our next available meeting that we can move this to?
The next available meeting, the 22nd actually does have an opening, so that's in two weeks. Then the meeting after that, the 12th of February, is actually full. So, it'd be either January 22nd or February 26th.
Sir, I don't know if you can, so January 22nd, to me, is kind of tight, in my opinion, to kind of get everything, documentation and everything, and work with all the parties involved. So, we'll continue the matter to February 26th. Are you okay with that?
Yes, I'm okay with it.
So, it gives you a little time to kind of prepare all the documents, update all the site plans, the floor plan, make sure you have parking on the plans. Maybe even we work some of the layout and reduce the footprints, like my colleague said, and talk to the neighbors, you know, see we can have some kind of middle ground. I think it would only help everyone involved. So, we'll continue the matter to February 26th. Any further comments by my colleagues? Mr. Callahan?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I would be in agreement with the continuance, too, if we can consider scaling it down. When you do the floor plans, I'd like to see what the existing floor plan is presently and what's being proposed. Because as Member McCarthy mentioned, what you're proposing, as he said, which was defined, three different living spaces, four different bedrooms, but we don't know what's in there right now, because what's existing and how you have it laid out, what you're being proposed. So, your plans should, on the floor plan, should, existing first floor, proposed first floor, existing second floor, proposed second floor, to that effect. So, we understand what's going on here and what's being proposed for the proposed addition in the back, but I think, as I mentioned before, maybe something you might wanna reconsider that may affect your relief that you're seeking here in the FAR with that addition in the back. Now, you can do whatever you want. I mean, I'm just telling you how that's what I've mentioned before. I mean, I can understand seeing topping off the back, the first floor in the back, and the back addition, I don't know. I mean, again, I'm still puzzled by that. But whatever you're proposing, just, I'd like to see the layout of the floor plans, how it's existing now, what's being, what's there, and then what's being proposed. So, that's, yeah, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Any other comments by my colleagues before we move forward with a motion? All right, can we have a motion to continue the matter, please, to February 26th?
Three, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2023-43 for variances at 39 Corbett Street to be continued to February 26th.
Second.
Proko.
Oh, thank you. Motion by Mr. McCarthy, continue the matter. Second one, Mr. Proko. Can we roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approved continuance.
Member Callahan.
Approved continuance. Approved continuance to February 26, 2024.
Member McCarthy.
Approved continuance to February 26th.
Member Briere.
Approval.
Member Proko.
Approved continuance to February 26, 2024.
Member Havi.
Approve.
Member Nickerson.
Approve.
All right. The matter's been continued. We'll see you February 26th. Okay, sir?
Thank you.
And just for the public notice, to be, or the further notice, this is the notice that this matter's being continued to February 26th. All right. Thank you for coming. Have a good night. We'll see you on 26th.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, we have minutes for approval, minutes for December 11th, 2023. Do we have any revisions, edits, updates to the minutes for my colleagues? Seeing none. Can we have a motion to approve the minutes, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for December 11th, 2023.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy, second one, Mr. Havi. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. All in favor. All right. Any other questions and comments by my colleagues before we adjourn? All right. Seeing none. Can we have a motion to adjourn, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy, second one, Mr. Proko. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. We are adjourned. Thank you. Have a good night, folks.